I'd like to call the Celine City Council meeting to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have an agenda in front of us. Is there any changes, additions, or deletions to the agenda?
Move to approve the agenda submitted.
Marle, you have a second?
I have a second.
Second, Rhodes. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We have no absences this evening. So I have the honor of presenting Retirement Watch and Proclamation to Chief Button. And I know he's here because I saw him when I walked in. Can you come up please?
Pretty good. I'm feeling retired. I'm feeling like I'm on vacation.
Okay, so this works. So it's my honor on behalf of the city and the city council and the citizens of Celine to present you with a watch. But before I do that, I'd like to say a few words. We had a retirement luncheon for Paul, was it a week ago? Last, okay? And this room was full. And I asked a lot of them to come back and they said, well, they didn't know if they could because they came from all over the state. It was a really wonderful opportunity to see the breadth of what the work is that Paul's done around the state, in our region, in our county. And you're very well-recognized. I'm speaking as mayor on behalf of the city, but what I learned there is you're very well-recognized and highly valued by people all over the state in the public safety service. And I just wanted to say, I was just like, I wish we had this on film. And I can't even begin, I can't even begin to share the amount of heartfelt appreciation that people from all over the state in public safety. And I know Mike's here and I know he's shaking his head, I see that, that shared. And it was just really, really wonderful to see that. I know it was very moving for you. And I just wanted to be able to share that in a very small way because I can't, like I said, even begin to share what that meant, I think, for everybody that was here, that was on council and staff, that I think they learned a lot about what you do outside the boundaries of the city limits. And so I wanted to start that way because I think it's really important for people, you know, our council meetings are televised and I think it's really important for people here at the council chambers and also in our community to recognize that our chief not only contributed greatly in our community, but he contributed in our county and in the region and across the state in very many meaningful ways. So thank you for that. And most of all, I want to thank you for what you've done for our city of Celine and our citizens and our businesses and our community as a whole. I felt much safer because of you. And, you know, I was thinking, you know, since then about everything that, you know, we've actually been hanging around for a long time together. Paul's been working with the city for 17 years and he was working in Ann Arbor for 30 years before that, right? So quite a long time. And so he came, I was on city council when Paul was hired in as police chief. And we've seen a lot of changes. At the time that he hired in, he was brave enough to work actually in our former police department, which was a mess. And Paul brought for not only a lot of technology around the county, but for the city, he really brought the standards of our police department to a higher level. And he also worked really hard with the architect and city staff here. This city hall and the police department is a product of a lot of work that Paul did directly, very intimately and very carefully to make sure that we were providing, you know, a public safety department that would meet the future needs of our community for many years to come. So you've done so much. I know with the technology and 800 megahertz, you guys spend a lot. And I know you've done a lot with homeland security and dispatch countywide. And we've crossed paths a little bit here and there on things. So, you know, I just wanted to say how much, you know, I'm really speaking for the whole community, but also personally, how much you've done for us in our community and how much we really appreciate it. We have this great watch here that I thought, well, there's, you know, Jack got this really big clock, so I'm like, where's the big clock? Then he said, well, he picked out the watch. So he's got this really great watch. And I'd like to read a proclamation. Also, I know there's some other people here. Our county commissioner's here, our sheriff is here, and I don't know if our state representative would like to say something, but, because I know he said something at the previous meeting. Okay, so I will open up the floor. I'd just like to read this proclamation and, right side up. So, "City of Celine, a recognition of Paul Button, Chief of Police, whereas Paul Button has dedicated his life work to a career in law enforcement, working more than 47 years in this profession, serving the last 17 years of his distinguished career as Chief of Police for the city of Celine. Whereas Paul Button has served in many capacities throughout his 47-year career in law enforcement, including patrol officer, detective, captain, and chief of police. And whereas Paul Button's leadership and mentoring of many individuals over the years have enriched their lives, both personally and professionally, in providing guidance and insight in the profession of law enforcement. Whereas Paul Button has been instrumental in improving the technology that is used today for communications throughout Washtenaw County and has been successful in obtaining grants for equipment and officers for the Celine Police Department. Whereas through his forward-thinking and desire to provide the best possible services to the Celine community, Paul Button actively pursued partnering with the Michigan State Police to house their substation in the Celine Police Department in an effort to economize operations and increase road patrol in the surrounding area. And whereas Paul was recently recognized by many of his colleagues and friends, including representatives of the Michigan State Police, Federal Bureau of Investigation, Michigan Area Chiefs of Police, Southeast Michigan Area Chiefs of Police, Washtenaw County 800 Megahertz Radio Consortium, State Representative Mark Womack, myself, and Councilmember Brian Marle. And whereas Chief Button has decided to hang up his gun and handcuffs after his long and distinguished career in law enforcement and retire from the Celine Police Department, now therefore I Gretchen Driscoll, Mayor of the City of Celine, on behalf of the Celine City Council and citizens of Celine, to hereby thank Paul Button for his dedicated service to the Celine Police Department and his profession of law enforcement with sincere best wishes for a long and enjoyable retirement." So congratulations.
Thank you.
Real quick, I'll just, yeah, a second.
Sorry. I was just really remiss. Hello? Okay. I just also wanted to say I was remiss in thanking Paul so much, but I didn't get a chance to thank Judy and his family for being so supportive. I know that he spent a lot of time away from home, serving our community, and I know that he wouldn't be here today and all the years if he didn't have the support. Because I know, we've talked about how much Judy means to you and what you guys are planning on doing. And hopefully I'll see you in Brecken sometime, right?
Yes.
I just wanted to thank the city of Celine and the citizens of Celine. My leaving is kind of bittersweet. It's tough to leave something you've done your entire adult life, 47 years. But it's time. And for my first week anyway, I've enjoyed retirement. I'm sure I'm going to enjoy it if I don't get on my wife Judy's nerves too much. I think it's going to work out real well. And I'm going to try not to do that. And my son and daughter-in-law, Biff and Sarah, are both here. And my family is a very large part of my life, my kids, my grandkids. And we're going to enjoy that. Thank you very much.
So I think I'm going to facilitate some other things from, let's see, the county, what would be the, who would like to, how about everybody that would like to come up and say thank you, come on up, because I'm going to mess up and forget somebody because I didn't really know. Good, how are you doing? Thank you for coming.
I'll be brief. I know you might, some who know me might find that hard to believe, but I will be. I'm a politician. First, I'd like to say thank you for having the opportunity to honor Paul. So as the sheriff, I interact with all the different chiefs and directors and all the different folks. And I have found Paul to be very engaging, a very good leader. And I have to tell you, you know, we've talked about the 800 megahertz, talked about a number of different things. But Paul was instrumental in, for those that have followed the county, this police services contracts and all the things that went along with that. And Paul's leadership on the PSSC was tremendous in helping us come to a resolution around the police services contracts. Beyond that, and I talked to Paul on many occasions about a lot of different things and his counsel and advice I've found very useful in my first term here as sheriff. So I want to tell him personally that I really appreciate his friendship, I really appreciate his partnership, and he's going to be missed. And we have, small token of our appreciation, when you think about this compared to the 47 years that Paul has given Washtenaw County, and I'll just read this, "In grateful appreciation to Chief Paul Button, Celine Police Department in recognition of his 47 years of outstanding and dedicated service to the citizens of Washtenaw County and our criminal justice community, myself and the Washtenaw County Sheriff's Office, January 11, 1965 to January 13, 2012." Again, Paul, I want to congratulate you and thank you very, very much for your partnership and friendship.
I want to thank you for your friendship.
So next we have our county commissioner, Alicia Ping.
Hi. So I'm going to skip all this stuff because it's mostly been said. But the Washtenaw County Board of Commissioners, at its meeting last Wednesday, we passed this proclamation. So I'll read the last part and then I just wanted to give a little personal thing. But now therefore it be resolved that the Washtenaw County Board of Commissioners thanks Paul Button for his dedicated service to the Celine Police Department and the profession of law enforcement with sincere and best wishes for a long and enjoyable retirement. So obviously, I'm county commissioner, but 12 years ago, I was elected to city council. And, you know, when you, you're a first teacher, you're a kindergarten teacher, right? All other teachers are measured by that bar and the same with your very first boss. And, you know, there's these people that come into your life who set the bar. And Paul was the first police chief I knew. So, you know, he is by which all others are measured in my eyes. And I just want to say it's been a privilege to work with you and to be a citizen in the community that you've made so safe, you know, for most of my life and all of my adult life. So just want to thank you for everything.
Thank you very much, Alicia.
Now we have State Representative Mark Womack.
Thank you, Gretchen. As Alicia said, a small token of our appreciation, actually, there's no token of our appreciation. We gave that to you last week. But I just wanted to take a moment and to thank you for everything that you've done, knowing you from when I was in Anna River City Council and when you'd come to our meetings and explain all the, why we had to get bigger name badges. And all that you've done throughout the county, because there isn't a time when we're talking about law enforcement that your name doesn't come out and people say, well, what does Paul think? And that is such a powerful statement that your peer group always wants your input before we act. And you can see that time and again in our community. And because of that, and I know how challenging it is on families when you're away, the many hours you are, because there is no time clock, there is no day, there is no month. It's what you have to do to be successful for your community. And you have always done that. You've done it professionally and you've done it with a smile and with friendship. And that, in this day, is rare. So Paul, on behalf of all the people in Washtenaw County, thank you very much for what you have done.
And our county prosecutor, Brian Mackey.
This is the scary part. Brian's quick. Yeah, I think everybody knows that.
It's been said, both at the retirement party and tonight, but a couple more things. We talk about 47 years in law enforcement because that's what people do. We like to quantify things. You could quantify it other ways. You could talk about the number of officers, police executives mentored. You could talk about the number of victims helped in 47 years, both directly and indirectly by Paul. You heard that he was a detective in Ann Arbor. You may not know, that's unusual for a law enforcement executive. That means that in his years there working major crimes, he has dealt with some of the worst people on the planet. We forget, we think about, we're bean counters, we think about getting bodies out on the road to answer calls. We think about routine things, traffic enforcement. But there are people in the world, some of them are just purely, purely evil. And unfortunately, Paul has had to deal with some of those and look them in the face. People who would take great joy in just killing you. That takes a toll. And the reason Paul has gotten through this is his sense of humor, which can be wicked and, well, inappropriate at times. And irritating to Judy, apparently. But it has gotten him through and it's helped a lot of us young guys get through.
Oh, that was a shot.
Congratulations to you, Paul. Have a great retirement. Play golf once in a while with us, please.
I'll give you a call. By all means. Brian, thank you very much.
I just want to say a couple of things. My 18 years, almost 18 years in Celine have been very rewarding, mainly because I've had the opportunity to work with some very, very talented professional people. On the police department side of the building, I'm getting all the accolades, they've done all the work. They are a fantastic group of people and your town's going to do very, very well with or without me. On the city hall side of the building, I've had the honor of working with some of the best staff and department heads that anybody could ever hope to work with. Everybody's ready to pitch in and help each other. With a group of people like that, folks, you can't go wrong. This town is going to succeed and going to succeed very, very well. Thank you very much.
We will miss you a lot.
I'll miss parts of this too, believe me. Not all of it, the parts of it.
Our next item on the agenda is the update from Arts and Culture Committee. Nancy Byers, thank you for coming tonight.
And I am Nancy Byers. I am also chairperson of the City of Celine's Arts and Culture Commission. And I wanted to come tonight just to give you a quick update on what's going on in the Arts and Culture Commission. But before I do that, I want to commend you, the mayor, the whole city council, for even having an Arts and Culture Commission. Because promoting artistic, creative, cultural opportunities for the people of Celine makes a lot of sense for a lot of reasons, but here are a couple to ponder. First is a statistic from the most recent cultural assessment done in Washtenaw County in which 63% of the people surveyed said that arts and cultural programs were very important, that was the top category, very important in their choice to live in Washtenaw County. Another 63% said that access to arts and culture was important in their decision to either keep or to locate their businesses in Washtenaw County. Next is a statistic from a story that appeared just a few days ago, January 18, in Crane's Detroit Business. And I made copies for you because the whole story is really interesting and pertinent to what I have to say tonight. The statistic is, for every $1 in 2009 that the state spent on nonprofit arts and cultural groups, more than $51 was pumped back into the Michigan economy. So no matter how you look at it, investment in arts and culture is good business. Those of us on the Arts and Culture Commission are working to capitalize on these findings that I've been giving you statistics on. At our last meeting, we took on the goal of developing a support system for members of the Celine Arts and Culture Community. To that end, we compiled a list of groups and businesses and individuals associated with the arts and cultural scene here in Celine. It's not a comprehensive list, it's a list of categories with examples underneath. And our next step is going to be to survey everyone on the list to find out both the bright spots as well as the challenges of their involvement in the arts and the cultural community here. And then we're going to tabulate those responses so that we can build on the positives and help bridge the challenges. One bridge we plan to tackle right away is to put these groups and these people who a lot of times don't even know about each other, and if they do, they're not quite sure what the other ones do or how they operate. So right off the bat, we plan to form a centralized list and bank of contact information to enable networking and cooperation between these entities. Another thing that we plan to tackle right away is funding. Because whenever you have a program that you want to implement or you're trying to develop an idea, funding is almost always a challenge. So on the Arts and Cultural Commission, we want to become a source for as up-to-date and as comprehensive a pile of information as possible about available grants and funding opportunities. The idea of the Arts and Culture Commission operating as a support system is a bit of a different tack than the direction we've taken in the past. In the past, the commission has itself taken on projects. For example, Seats of Our Heritage, which is the outdoor sculpture by artist Rick Detroyer that was installed across from the Drowsy Parrot last fall, was a project we took on. This year, we're finishing another project, a downtown sculpture walk, which is scheduled to be dedicated this spring. We're continuing support to work to develop and implement a plan to bring the Bixby Marionette collection back into the community experience here in Celine. We still might get involved in projects from time to time, but the feeling on the commission is that we can better fulfill our mission to promote artistic, creative, and cultural opportunities in Celine by supporting the many Celenians who are already actively involved in that pursuit. I want to point out that Linda Terhar is on the Arts and Culture Commission as the liaison with the city. Until just recently, Jim Roth was on the Arts and Culture Commission, and we're going to miss him a lot. I appreciate the opportunity to give you this update and I want you to know that our meetings are held in this building, in the conference room, usually the second Sunday, or the second Monday of the month at 6:30. The meetings, you all know, are open. We love visitors, we love ideas, we love suggestions, so feel free.
Thank you.
Thank you very much and thank you for all you do for the community.
Thank you. We have a Winterfest update from Art Trap.
Good evening. Last Thursday, when I had asked Diane if I could be on the agenda, I had come to, was hoping to come to this meeting all hyped up about everything that we could do for Saturday. My connection with Mother Nature appeared to be pretty good as it snowed on Friday and Saturday and all of a sudden my connection broke down. It's just not what it used to be. So anyways, long and short of it is, I have talked to the other competing communities, Zeeland, St. Clair, Douglas, and Three Rivers. All of them are in the same boat that we are. There is no snow and it doesn't look like the forecast is going to have any snow at all. All the other communities have canceled their snowman building championship of the free world, as well as us. So what we are going to do, and we have spent a lot of time in the last year, as you can see from what's on the screen there, Frosty has been all over the community at numerous meetings, in stores, just every place I could think of. And this little poster kind of shows some of the places that he's been, and it's by all means not a comprehensive list. I counted some 32 businesses that he was at during the course of the year, spending as much as a week there in some cases. So anyways, the long and short of what we're planning to do on Saturday is that we're going to have the breakfast at the downtown diner. For $4.99, there'll be a four-egg omelet fully loaded with hash browns. There's also a choice of pancake or toast that goes along with it. 9:15, we'll start having the ice carving downtown. We're hoping to have five locations, kind of one on each corner of town. Unfortunately, the, or fortunately, the 5K race is still on and that will start at the corner of South Ann Arbor Street and Henry Street. We had to scratch bingo. I found out there's a legal thing that you have to have a license to buy the bingo paraphernalia and we weren't able to hook up with anyone that had a license that was active. So we are substituting a euchre tournament at the Stone Arch from 10 to 12 and everybody's welcome. Also, at 10 o'clock, we'll have the kids' games and crafts at the chamber office, along with a snowbank treasure hunt. The snowbank treasure hunt is a kiddie pool filled with numerous peanuts, not the eating kind, but the other packing kind. And the Fidelity Bank has incorporated a few coins that are being tossed into that and we'll get a chance for the younger set to kind of dive in and see what they can find in that pool. Unfortunately, the chili and hot chocolate, the ice dancing and the snowman building and the snowman decorating are all canceled. We will still have hayrides and I'd personally like to thank the core crew who has been so diligently working on Winterfest right along up until today, and that includes Lori Dawson, Lindsay Rodstrom from Spotted Dog, Jeff Dowling from La Fontaine, Carol Osterling, Gary Marquardt, Shelley Rankin from Fidelity Bank, and Jim Roth. I've had a lot of suggestions as to what we can do to substitute for snow. None of them, in my opinion, work. I tried to contact the U of M and Yost Arena to see if we couldn't get some shavings from the Zamboni, but it's my understanding that that pile isn't melting too, so that isn't going to work. The ice rink, it was opened up on Saturday evening and I understand that a number of people did use it. And also on Sunday, I went over there this morning and it's now closed again because of the temperature. And unless we get some sustained cold weather, it may not open up again. But we're hopeful that in the next 15 days or so, that the temperature will be kind enough to let us open it back up again, so. And in closing, St. Clair on Wednesday is going to do the Heykey Luda Dance and Song. And the story goes that up in the Houghton Hancock area, they had a snowmobile race that they were going to put on for that city. They did this dance and song and ultimately what happened is that it did snow. Unfortunately, it snowed so much, they had to cancel the race. So if it snows, don't blame it on me. St. Clair's the one that's doing it. So anyways, I just want to thank you all. Appreciate it. I guess we'll wait for next year and then we get to keep our friend for another year, so.
If there's any changes to the schedule, where will we, could we find out?
We're going to blast it out tomorrow.
So if the weather gets cold Thursday or Friday and the rinks open and we have snow, you put something out on Be Celine?
We'll put it out on Be Celine. We'll put it out on everything we can. The reporter did a job on, you know, this week's edition. I know Tran is here and he'll do whatever he can to help us, but we're looking at some 40, 50-degree temperatures for the rest of the week. Hennyfield's pretty muddy unless it really freezes up quickly, so. Anyway, we tried.
Well, we appreciate all the work you and your committee did because it was a great event last year and it obviously is weather contingent, so.
Yep.
You know, a lot of people like it when it's not too cold, but we don't like it for that Saturday, this Saturday coming up. But thanks again for all your work and we'll see you on Saturday.
Thank you. I just wanted to let everybody know what was going on and so.
Thanks.
Anyways, thank you.
Next on the agenda, we have citizen comments on agenda items. Under the Open Meetings Act, any citizen may come forward at this time, make comment or question on items that appear on this agenda. Comments will be limited to three minutes per person. Anyone who would like to speak is requested by not required to state his or her name and address for the record. and address for the record. Is there anyone that would like to speak, anything on the agenda? Go ahead, come up to the mic, please.
My name is Andrew Heber, and I'm a student at Celine High School. And I have a question about the request for water and sewer credit. I'm the second item on the agenda. And I'm just curious, since this is my first time coming to one of these meetings, is requesting sewer credit for a leak like that, is that standard practice for business? And if so, can it also be applied to private citizens if a water main breaks by their house or something?
Okay. Is there any other comments? So, what we'll do is take comments, and then when we get to the item, we will answer a question. Go ahead. Anybody that wants to speak is welcome to come to the microphone.
Hi, my name's Adam Korslick. I'm also a student at Celine High School. Just commenting on the farmer's market. On behalf of my mom and my grandma, they like to thank you for the farmer's market. They think it's actually a luxury. My grandma lives in Pickney, she comes all the way down here, so...
That's great.
I don't know, it says budget right here, so if you guys are planning to change anything, just don't take it away, because my grandma and my mom really like it. Thank you.
Any other comments? Okay, if not, we'll move on to the consent agenda. The final consent agenda will normally be adopted without discussion. However, at the request of any citizen or council member, any item may be removed from the consent agenda for council discussion.
Move to approve, this is submitted.
Hey, move Rhodes, second Roth. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Under unfinished business, we have item 1170, the 2011 Farmer's Market, budget versus actual. Nancy Crisp, our market manager, is here, and if you'd like to make a little comments to how things went, and maybe answer the question of that gentleman?
I really liked that comment, and yes, we are staying open, absolutely. This year, we had a nice big profit, and one of the reasons I changed the way we advertise, I'm not advertising so much in the newspaper, but from going to Facebook and blogging, and, you know, the postcards we handed out, and all the flyers, and we're actually saving money doing that, it's requiring more of my time, but I think it's more effective. So, I think we're doing great. Both the Saturday market and the Tuesday market are supporting themselves, and as well as the winter, the new winter market that's going on right now. But first, we probably should cover this, the summer market, because that's what's on the agenda. Is there any question regarding these reports?
No? Okay.
Good. Okay, we can look forward to having all this happen next year. I've got vendors already signed up, so it's going, I think it's going to do well. We are looking at accepting the Bridge Card. It's more, a little bit more of a process than we thought it would be, and a little bit more expensive than we thought it would be. But we're giving it a try. The winter market, I just want to encourage everybody to come. It's at Liberty School from 9:00 to noon, and we're doing really well. We started out with over 30 vendors before the holiday, and now we have over 20 vendors, which I think is great for an indoor market. And with the antique show there last week, we had a lot of people through there. It was a lot of fun. So, I think that's all. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Any questions for Nancy? No? Thank you, Nancy. So, we have a motion on the agenda to acknowledge receipt of the farmer's market financial reports from Nancy Crisp for the 2011 Tuesday and Saturday markets and file.
Move to acknowledge receipt.
Second.
Move Rhodes, second Girba. Discussion? Mr. Rhodes.
Two, three things. One is, I'd like to suggest that the city seriously consider converting the three, what are now three separate farmer's markets into one, now that we've proven the viability of the Saturday and the Tuesday and the winter market, and just have one city farmer's market rather than the three. It will allow the city manager, if she chooses to do that, the ability to sign one contract for a vendor for the entire year round, instead of having to sign and process three separate contracts and agreements. Should reduce the accounting time, should reduce the number of checks that the city has to process, and should just make the whole thing more efficient. And also, wanted to compliment Nancy, the market manager. She has recruited volunteers from the vendors who are willing to go around and put out signs and take up the signs, and help with other setup for every single market day, and that saves probably about two hours per market day. And if those volunteers weren't there, then we would have to be compensating the market manager for that, and so she's done a really good job of getting that kind of assistance. Then the last thing, just a little bit of a teaser, some of us remember the Burma Shave signs that were out. Watch for those in the next couple of weeks around the winter farmer's market. We've got some, something underway. It should be fun for everybody.
Great, thank you. Any further discussion on the motion? If not, we have motion to acknowledge receipt and file. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Under new business, item 1220, Woodland Drive Street Project. This is Maple Road to Industrial Drive, M.DOT, contract number 12-5004, control section EDF 81566, and job number 114506. This is a motion to acknowledge receipt of the January 16, 2012 memo from City Superintendent Engineer Rubel to approve or not approve contract number 12-5004 between the Michigan Department of Transportation and the City of Celine for reconstruction work along Woodland Drive East from Maple Road to Industrial Drive with other related necessary work as a Category F-funded project, up to $375,000, with remaining cost of the project to be the responsibility of the city. To authorize or not authorize, the mayor and clerk to execute contract number 12-5004 with the Michigan Department of Transportation after review and approval of the city attorney.
Move to approve and authorize.
Move Morrow.
Second.
To approve and authorize. Second Peters, to approve and authorize. Discussion. Mr. Morrow.
Well, thank you, mayor. I would just say that, and many of my colleagues are aware of this, but when I ran for council four years ago, I emphasized the importance of maintaining our infrastructure. And perhaps of equal importance is the ability to secure funding to maintain our roads, our sewer, and our water infrastructure. And as I was going door-to-door, you know, articulating that desire to our citizens, there were a great many who said, "Well, what are you doing about Woodland Drive?" Or, "Let's do something about Woodland Drive," especially in that section beginning to the east of North Maple. And so, I'm glad to see that this project has come to fruition. It is important. That's a main artery, a strategic passageway in the heart of our industrial park, and as the mover of this motion, obviously enthusiastically endorsed it and urged my colleagues to vote in the affirmative. Thank you.
Mr. Rhodes, do you have your hand raised?
I was just going to say that I am pleased to see that, as part of the reconstruction of this section of roadway, that the bike lanes will be restripped on there. It's pretty hazardous trying to ride in that area, and at the moment, even without the snow or ice on the road. And it will allow us to tie in to the recently completed Pittsfield Township bike lanes, which have been constructed from the eastern edge of the rec center area, what's the name of that park?
Teft Park.
Eastern edge of Teft Park, down Textile to Lower, and up Lower, all the way to Ellsworth. Very nice, wide, paved lanes, and even in the coldest of weather, whenever I go down that route, I see people walking, or jogging, or riding bikes, so that's great. Thank you to our staff who made sure that that was included in, as part of the contract.
Further discussion on the motion?
I just like, I don't know if you're here, but being on Watts, you know, this was a, this is a grant, an economic development grant, and that's partly why it was delayed, because you're in a queue. We compete with the rest of the municipalities and the road commission around the county for this money. So, obviously, $375,000 is, you know, a good figure to not have to have the city put forward so we can manage that, what little money we have left from our bonds for other projects. And so, I just wanted to say that I appreciate your work in making sure, and we put forward, you know, at this point, we have a plan, transportation plan that goes through to 2035, long-range plan, and then we fund it on a three-year program. So, while M.DOT did pull back on our reconstruction of US 12, we got this, you know, they're not messing around with this money, but it's a little different kind of situation. But if you want to talk a little bit about the project, that would be great.
Just to recap the memo, we, city council engaged Wilcox. We hired Wilcox last November, and they should finish the design bid package and get that ready by the end of January, and then perhaps we'll go through a review process and finish programming with the state. And so, the project would be bid probably the end of February or up to the middle of March. And if we, once we see bids, it'll come back to the council. In this case, we are, we qualify for the direct grant, which some communities are, take on that initiative. You know, it means more work for us, and it's certainly more responsibility, because we have to administer the contract for the state. So, we take over that responsibility. But on the other hand, we don't have to pay the state administrative fees, so we're going to save that much money, plus we do our own inspection, we save that much money, and we do half the preliminary design. So, with that, and the direct grant, once we bid it, the council will actually award this project, even though it's funded by the state, similar to Federal Aid Urban and other projects like the ARR-A. So, we did one of these, we've done three of these now. This will be the third one that we've qualified for Category F, so we've been doing quite well in Category F.
Any questions for Mr. Rubel? Okay, great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
So, we have a motion, a second, to approve and authorize? No further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 1221, this is a request for water sewer credit, BP Car Wash, address 924 East Michigan Avenue. Actually, that would be Wes. This is a motion to acknowledge receipt of the letter from Cahill Yassin, requesting reduction in his water sewer bill due to a leak, and to acknowledge receipt of the January 19, 2012 memo from City Treasurer Bennett.
Move to acknowledge receipt.
Move Morrow. Second, Girba?
Yep.
Discussion. Ms. Bennett, would you like to make some comments? I know we went through this at the last meeting, so we just want to go through it.
Yeah, we're spending a lot of time together this year.
Yeah, and only two meetings so far.
Yeah. Mr. Yassin had called in right at the following day after our last council meeting, when we discussed the payment plan option, and we explained the payment plan option to him. And he submitted all the receipts and everything, and said that's, that would definitely be something he'd be interested in doing, but he also wondered if there was any process in place where the city council would grant him or afford him a credit or some sort of relief to that, to this bill. I, we, my office advised him that, you know, there was not such a credit plan in place that the city had done away with a credit plan in the past, and that we had just worked on this, on this language for a payment plan. And I think that Mr. Campbell and Mr. Grossman are going to try to work on some sort of verbiage so that we can, you know, have that included in the payment plan, that the payment plan is in place of a credit option.
Okay, thank you. And our standard policy is not to do credits, right?
Right. We used to have a credit policy where all residents and commercial businesses in the city were entitled to a, up to $100 credit on the time, if they proved that they had a faulty appliance. The city council, I don't have it attached, but I think it was in the early '90s, did away with that credit because of the time that it takes to research and to acknowledge the fact that that time, and that all, you know, and find out what their average bill was and do all of that. So, in hindsight, also, you look at that, and you think that, why would we issue a credit when the water has been treated and went through our system, and the cost has been incurred by the city? So, to issue a credit to recoup the cost of the water and whatever else was kind of a... Anyway, no, we do not have a credit on the books at this time, or any policy stating that there is room for credit in the event of a faulty appliance.
Thank you. I'm smiling because I am the one that made that motion in 1896, so that was...
Was it?
So, okay. So, we have a motion on the floor. Is there any questions for Ms. Bennett?
No.
Okay, thank you very much. So, we have a motion on the floor. A mover and a second, or to acknowledge receipt. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The motion would be to approve or deny the request for credit to the water sewer bill at 924 East Michigan Avenue. If approved, a credit in the amount of blank dollars. If denied, that the owner apply to the city treasurer to set up a payment plan as authorized by council at their December 19, 2011 meeting. Do we have a motion? Okay, motion dies for lack of support. We'll move on to the next item. Which is discussion. We have Commissioner Committee reports. Mr. Rhodes?
Have a report from the Environmental Commission, which I may struggle a little bit to read, because I was trying to write this on my lap while I was watching the football game last night. The, at the last meeting of the Environmental Commission, we voted to approve the donation of four rain barrel kits to the high school ag program for their greenhouse, and that presentation will be made tomorrow at 1:00 P.M. We approve the purchase of 200 white pine seedlings and 50 dogwood trees to be given away on April 21st as part of the recognition of Earth Day. Earth Day is actually April 22nd, a Sunday, but we're going to do it on Saturday, the 21st, and have not talked formally with the market, farmer's market manager yet, but we anticipate doing that outside the market, or if the weather's bad inside. Let's see. We're going to jointly present a check to the teen center jointly with the administrative board of the teen center on February the 9th at 6:00 P.M. to recognize the monies that were received from the Electronic Waste Company for the last electronic waste event, which was cosponsored by the Environmental Commission and the teen center, and it's Thank you to everybody in the community who participated in donating something for that event. Our next electronic waste event will be on April 28th. Let's see, we agreed to purchase 350 more energy-saving booklets for distribution within the community, and the reason for that purchase is that there's a new update that's going to come out, and so the old ones, which sold for $7.95, are available for $1 each, and I'm going to pick them up as I drive through Lansing to, for a convention on Wednesday. So, there's no shipping costs. Let's see. We are working with PACT, which is Parents and Community Together, to develop a better informed citizenry on their being able to turn in their excess, excessive prescription drugs, unused drugs. There are two pharmacies in the community that I know of that will take them back free of charge. One is Bush's, and the other is the Celine Pharmacy. And I think Jensen's may also, but I've not been able to go out and talk with him yet. The thing that they won't take back, though, are Schedule I drugs, drugs that have controlled substances within them, because of some very complex rules involving that. So, I talked to Pittsfield Township, and they are, on April 28th, going to have a, participate in the National Take Back Initiative. And so, those folks who have Schedule I drugs, rather than having them sit around in your house where somebody could get them and use them inappropriately, you would pass that on, please, ma'am, take them there. Pittsfield Township, April 28th, 10 to, 10 to 2. And that is an event that happens twice a year. Let's see. We are continuing to work on developing the environmental recommendations. We were calling it Environmental Checklist, but we decided we're going to, we're going to change the name of that. Environmental recommendations for residential and commercial construction, and we looked into the possibility... And we looked into the possibility of sponsoring a toxic waste turn-in event here in Celine, but found out that that is way too expensive. It would take up our entire annual budget for one event. So we're going to work with the county and some other folks around who put on a couple of those a year, and we'll just publicize them within the community. And I believe that's it from the Environmental Commission. Thank you.
Are there any other commission reports? Mr. Peters?
Hi, I just want to hear a quick one. You know, there's many great volunteering opportunities here in Celine. And one of them would be for the Celtic Festival, which is July 14th this year. We're always looking for new people, new volunteers. There's many, we have many needs for different talents. We have computer talents, or construction talents, or organizational skills, people skills. We need them all, especially young fellows out there. We're always looking for muscle on game day. There's lots of things you can do. Right now, we're looking for someone to man the information booth, control parking, Thursday setup, and Sunday cleanup. Setup would involve setting up tables, chairs, stages, stage props, backdrops, things like that. So it's a great opportunity. It's a lot of fun. If anybody's interested, contact the office, and they can tell you how to get started. And I hope you give it some thought, because it's, it's very worthwhile. Thank you.
Is there any other committee reports, commission reports? Do we have reports and announcements? I guess just art, everybody needs to hang out downtown at the Winter Fest. There'll be fun things to do, even if there is no snow. But you never know. Things can change in a blink of an eye in this state, so. Anybody else have any other reports or announcements? Mr. Rhodes?
Two items. One is, I distributed some information ahead of time here to council members on the Kwanis Win Big for Kids event that they're sponsoring, to raise funds to distribute to several different nonprofit organizations within the community. And I would encourage everyone to participate in that, if at all possible. The date is March 24th. The tickets are $100 each, which sounds like a lot, but it's for two people, dinner, entertainment, and a raffle ticket, with the top prize being $5,000. So for a $100 investment, you have a chance to get $5,000 and a whole bunch of other stuff. And do good things for the kids and others in the community. And then the second thing is Celine Leadership Institute, class number 14, graduated just a couple of days ago in these chambers. And so we have now begun to recruit for class 15, and that will start on April 26th and 27th. It's a two-day retreat down the Hillsdale area, and then meets on the, typically the third Thursday of each month, one day a month, for the next nine months thereafter. And information is available on the Celine Leadership Institute website, and there will be some brochures around. Library has some on display. And I believe we might have some on display here at City Hall. If not, I'll bring some over. That's it for me. Thank you.
Okay, any other reports and announcements? If not, we take. I don't know. Want to talk about? You mean the fact that they came to town, or that we're going up there?
If they came and we're going.
Okay. We had a visit, some of you may know that we, thank you, Mr. Rhodes, that we applied to the Michigan Main Street Program, which is a formal program that's done over, by over 2,000 cities around the country. And I think there's 16 cities in the state of Michigan. It's about a six- or seven-year program that helps communities strengthen and promote and re-energize their downtown. And so we've actually been working on this program. We applied for the associate level last year and did some training with other Main Street communities around the state, and learned that it was really beneficial to those communities, and decided to apply for the select level. It is a separate entity from the city. However, the city will be contracting with, for a portion of the program if we do, in fact, receive the select level. So two people came from Lansing, and we spent the day with them last Tuesday, walked them around downtown, talked to them about why we felt this was important for the future of the community. I think they, it was very well received. We are scheduled to go up there on February 8th and do a dog and pony show presentation. So we're in the throes of planning for that, and it's a big deal. It would be quite an honor to get that award. As I said, there's only, I think it's, either 13 or 16 cities around the state. So it's, it would be a five-year program where they would commit to helping train us to be even better than we already are, which is always something we're always looking to do in this community and the city. So anyhow, it's exciting for the community, and we're anxious. I, we will do our presentation, and then they will let us know in March whether or not we meet the qualifications to achieve the select level. But there will be a lot of opportunity there for, again, for you folks that are in the audience to participate in the community in a different way. So it's very exciting. Any other reports or announcements? If not, we'll move on to public comment on the Open Meetings Act. Any citizen may come forward at this time and make comment or question to the city council. This public comment period will be limited to three minutes per person, and anyone who would like to speak is requested but not required to state his or her name and address for the record. Is there anybody that would like to say anything?
I'm handing out a copy of the Celine River Greenway Alliance, which very, not very often gets out a newsletter. I think this is our second one, but it's by far the best we've ever done. And every landowner with property on the Celine River received a copy of the newsletter. We hope to help them realize how precious our river is. And I'd like to review the newsletter with you a little bit. On the front page is the Draper Houston Meadows Preserve right up, which through the efforts of a couple of our members, was brought to the attention of the NAP program for the county. And it's been developed into a very quiet little area where people can go to walk, and there's no, no riding of vehicles or anything in there, but it's a nice, quiet little area where people can walk along the river. And on the second page, it tells that about the Celine River Greenway members have been on the lookout for properties adjacent to the Celine River that might be acquired through the NAP program, and have been talking to their friends and neighbors about it. And especially John Farmer and Rod Hill have been instrumental in getting this property turned into this preserve. Then there's an article on Ford Lake and Mylan, and then, of course, an item that's dear to my heart is the Adopt a Stream Program with the River Rays and Watershed. That is still going on despite the fact that the Watershed Council has fallen on financial hard times. Dr. Martin of Adrian College is keeping the program going, and he is accumulating a lot of valuable data from that program. And then there's a program on, or an article on navigating the Celine River. A couple of our members get out in canoes and try to go down the river. It's difficult because of all the logs and trees in the stream. And then an article on purple loosestrife and some efforts that have been made to control that. And on the back page is an article about the Celine River Greenway Alliance and who we are. So we hope this will bring our little group into more prominence in the four governmental units that participate in this. And then in the middle is a handout for landowners who are interested in buffer strips along the river, which we hope they will take an interest in and start planting some plants that will help to preserve the edge of the river. The money for the newsletter, I don't know if you recall, the $100 that each of the four units of government put in, about half of that was spent for this, and it was mailed to every landowner along the river. So I think those funds were very well spent, and we still have a couple hundred dollars to work on another project. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your continued commitment to the Celine River Greenway. Do we have any other public comment?
Hi, Alicia Ping, 307 North Harris, and you're Wasna County Commissioner. I just wanted to let you know that there's only a few days left, but the county is offering home radon test kits, and Mr. Rhodes made me think of this when you were giving your environmental report, for half price. So they're only $5 right now. And I'm sure most of you know that radon is a naturally occurring gas, and it happens to be very prevalent in the southwest, southwest portion of Wasna County. So if you are, haven't tested your home ever, it might be a good time to do it, because you can do it for $5. And if you have tested and have a radon system, it might be a good time to recheck just for your own personal well-being. So, and those are available through the county, and you can get more information at ewasna.org. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Irene, Washington, 8409 South Huron River Drive. That is Ipsilanti Township. I am a candidate for the 22nd Circuit Court, and that affects Celine. And I thought I would stop by and introduce myself to all the city council members and to the citizens here tonight. And so that is why I'm present, and I won't take up much of your time. I just wanted to say hello, and I will be around if anyone has any questions. I'm looking for as much support as I can get.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Nathan Faiman from Celine High School. And I came up here to talk about the Woodland Drive Street Project. I think it would be a good idea to do work on the road, because like the bike lanes, you can't really see the lines on that. So it's not that safe for other people, and the road's just kind of bumpy and beat up anyways for everyone to drive on. So that'd be nice to have it more smooth and comfortable to drive on.
Great, thank you.
Hello, I'm Adam Brule, and I'm also a student at Celine High School. And I would just like to make a comment, a quick comment, about the art and culture in Celine. And as an art student at Celine High School, I think it's a good idea to invest in it, and it would make our community that much better. So, thank you.
Great, thank you very much.
And I'm Lexi Dawson. We're from Celine High School, and we just wanted to comment on the Woodland Road reconstruction. And we take that road to school every day, and we would, like, we think it's a good idea to make it a lot better, because we have noticed it's in bad shape. So, yeah.
Great. Thank you. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Clayton Kilgannon, and I'm from Celine High School. And I'm taking a class called Human Fizz, and it really makes us think about our diets and what we eat. So I really like to go to the farmer's market, because I know where, that's where my food will come from. And like Bush's, you don't get organic options, whereas at the farmer's market, you can, you know where it's coming from, and it's healthy. So like, keeping the budget is a good thing for the farmer's market.
Great, thank you. If not, would you have any other business coming for the Celine City Council? Our upcoming meetings are February 6, 2012, at 7:30. We have a regular meeting February 27th on regular meeting, and March 5th, regular meeting at 7:30. So we need a motion to adjourn at 8:37.
Second.
Hira. Second, Marl. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.